Also, okay, so I fill this out and just take this?
Yeah, take that. And then I'll get you a random number, I'll probably text you his number. We're going to retro. They don't get it in. Your number if you get it.
Yes. Never seen him. I don't believe Jay's gonna be here.
Yeah, he's on his way.
He had no agenda.
Why are we gonna be here?
No, and he had no agenda. Oh, Dick, you mean. I was talking about Jay. I don't know about Dick.
But Jay isn't?
That's my understanding.
Okay.
There'll be a rather thin finance committee meeting this evening.
That's good.
You can dance and I'll sing. Cleveland, feel this damn seat.
I saw, I read mine online and saw anything, but I didn't see it being here. I'm sorry.
I was counting you for.
You said you didn't?
Absolutely.
Well, can it be edited? Just start again. Every day. Every day they're coming up with something new, so all you can hope for is. You, um, I still wanna get a couple. We never did do that, that was my fault, I never. Didn't have to really pick them up.
I'll tell you tomorrow. Call me. Give me time.
Okay.
We're gonna wait just a second for Chief Basin to make it back to us.
We're off his agenda and then I.
Yes, we're waiting a minute. Yeah. We need to get sworn in tonight. So I figure I'll have David do it, if that's alright with Dick.
David's got the oats too, Tim, so.
Huh?
David has the oats.
Okay. We can do it right before we start council, I mean, you know, or caucus, whatever, I mean, I don't think we need to make a production of it. It'll be just Jeff?
Four of us, yeah.
Yeah, the four of us.
Oh, we gotta do this thing?
I figure just have David, if he can do it in here, if he wants to, he can just say, "I state your name," and then, you know, say, "I do."
Okay.
Unless you wanna make a production of it.
I got my best play on shirt on tonight, so I'm dressed for war.
Thursday or whenever. Okay.
I'll just swear.
You got fire when?
Do you swear this is your last meeting?
Huh?
This is your very last meeting?
I swear.
I'll be on my best behavior tonight.
What's that?
I'll be on my best behavior tonight.
That's what I look at this man when you say, "I have enjoyed working with some of you." I've enjoyed working with some of you.
Or on the can't, we're just talking.
Somebody's gonna, somebody's gonna keep you honest, talking.
Alright. Well, we'll kick this off at five thirty-three tonight. Chief Higgins, we will let you go first since this is your last official meeting.
Can I change anything? Let Johnny get it.
Really?
That'd be fine.
Okay, well.
He's more important than I am.
Well, Chief Basin? You're up.
What are we gonna do when it peaks? All that humor. I'm gonna miss it so much. Uh, let's see, calls for service were more than last year, less than two previous, so we're gonna ring it an average there. Uh, same on the offense, reports will be within four-year average of one hundred and thirty-four. The rest, uh, will above average of fifty-five. And accidents, um, high, I would expect less this year, but that's a high number, forty-two. Citations at eighty-six, which is a high for a year. Something we try to stress this.
This surprises me, given the fact that we haven't had any bad road conditions, you know, in the month of December. To attribute to anything.
I don't know. I couldn't tell you what's going on because our citations are up this year and, you know, we're being seen out there. But we've had two fadals last year and had two fadals this year.
Yeah.
Uh, which are saying that's high, I mean, we've went years ago without having one, so, uh, during the week of New Year's Day, we worked and published on it. Saw the news release, we work on State Highway Patrol and put an emphasis on speed and such during the day. And we'll be putting out a press release, released some terrible numbers, I think I'd already hit the website, but, um, published how many citations. I think it was over seventy traffic stops, thirty-some citations over the week, four days, we've concentrated on between us and the state patrols. And trying to do something to reduce the numbers, Licking County altogether did spike numbers. In all, crashes on injuries and on fadals for a year. So, it's not just heat, for some reason, it's a spike year. Two thousand and twelve, we left most of the numbers this year of twelve, twelve was a spike year across the board on, on everything for us, so we haven't quite reached that. But for some reason, the, um, the, the bad accidents really come up in Licking County. And Lieutenant Miller's been on top of it reporting it, he's worked with Newark, he's worked, uh, he's really good, he reaches out to all the area chiefs.
He's at the Granville post?
Yeah, he's at the Granville post, tries to, you know, put out releases and do extra things and, you know, do DUI blitzes or OBI checkups. I think he had two this year, one of the, he worked with Task One, one two. So, and you've seen Newark, because of their numbers, they received that traffic enforcement grant this year and they've had in the last six months, a lot of extra officers on during certain times to do nothing to traffic. So, the new money becomes available here soon, I'll be working with, um, the state representative from the traffic bureau at the Department of Public Safety. And he said, "Since we've had that many in the last two years, we're gonna qualify for some grants, maybe so we'll put them in." So, we'll get that and then we'll probably have an extra officer or two out during certain times.
What was the total on that, or do we know yet?
He thought we could get around twenty grand.
And that is to go directly toward paying salaries for extra people on duty focused on traffic patrol?
Exactly.
Okay.
Hopefully we'll get that, we don't know until April.
Well, it's, it's good, it's good and bad, I guess, that we're getting that money, it's a double-edged sword.
Yeah, they've been watching them all year and the numbers have just, uh, haven't let up.
There's a, uh, there's a, you know, when you're, when you're on I-70, or maybe it's even one sixty-one, I can't remember, but I think it's on I-70. When you're diving in toward Columbus, you know, one of those digital, uh, things, like if there's an Amber Alert, you know, it shows on there. It has said for a few months now, the percentage of fatal accidents in Ohio being up, I can't remember what the percentage was, it was ten percent or fifteen percent or twelve, I can't remember what the percentage was. But it, they would, they were showing that on that, uh, board, on that digital board.
And I don't know what the representative of that on statewide, you know, because this year, last year raised the, the speed limit. So you could be getting a reflection of that. I, I do know when I travel in the interstate, it seems like people are going a lot faster than they're used to, so that might lead to some of the statewide. But that does not explain why there's so many, basically, a lot of rural and small city urban accidents like we did happen, because there's been no changes.
Yeah.
I don't think that the traffic count was any higher, it's been, like, it's, uh, it's the same so. Uh, as far as the reasoning, then we'll just have to watch it, if those numbers stay where they are, we're gonna start looking at positive factors. Look at engineering, look at trends, look at, uh, you know, things we may need to start doing to make it better.
What, what's the timeframe on these grants?
They would run for a year.
No, no, I mean, when do we have to apply for them, when are they granted?
It comes out pretty quick, uh, Michael Bryant let me know when it becomes available, helping with the paperwork to be submitted. Okay, that'll take place in March.
Okay.
And then, he said April is when the awards will come out.
Does that run April to April?
April to April.
Okay.
Rodney, hit it first.
Just a, a statement, you know, cheap gas, that's to influence, you know, more people driving more miles because they can afford to. It's gotta have an influence.
Maybe.
I think I, I don't think the traffic's any more intense, might be sometime, maybe if we get that grant, uh, when I talk to Michael Bryant and I'll ask him about maybe doing some traffic counts and get some comparison going there. Might not be more people, but just more trips because the gas is cheaper. That's a good point, thanks, sir. Remember you, uh, that, that's very viable.
I, I wonder if there is any indication of the employment rate? If employment's going up, there's more people traveling to work. I'm just curious.
It'd be a positive factor, maybe it is well, but, I don't know, they say statewide, that the employment rates are good, so it could be that fact as well.
Could be the condition of the roads around county, maybe deteriorating roads in some areas are contributing to more accidents.
Well, and one of the things that, uh, that I know was a contributing factor for the Licking County accidents, especially once we had several around the, uh, warm weather months where people not wearing seatbelts immediately ejected from vehicles.
Wow.
So that it's a, it's a disturbing trend, and a lot of those were younger people. Uh, we had, the one was the teenagers, there was a multiple fatal.
Yeah, yeah.
Which, um, that, of course, they were driving in a high race speed, in a bad manner. It's hard to say if that was, I think two of those were ejected from the vehicle. And your chances of survival, which I wouldn't tell you, if you're ejected from the vehicle during a crash, your chances of survival go down dramatically, so.
Is that the one where the, where the driver survived, but the other passengers died?
I think so, yeah. There was three of them, yeah, three passengers died, their names, he was the only one living. And they were, I think they were all young people.
Yeah. Was that up around Johnstown?
Yeah.
Yeah. They seemed to have skewed the, skewed the stats up around Johnstown and Route sixty-two, they seemed to have gotten a lot of bad fatalities.
Sixty-two in general, yeah.
Yeah, sixty-two is, has been identified as a problem area, I think I was just reading something in the paper about, uh, uh, enforcement blitz, that they, somebody was going, having on sixty-two coming up here.
After the last two teenagers that were killed, if they're friends of the family or whatever, up there, just north of, you all knew there on sixty-two. I think they had six fatalities there in the last, in that small strip they were in the last two years. So, we drive, portion of that's.
We drive that course a lot, we go to doctor. It's one sixty-one, it's very, very dangerous, they drive ten, twelve, fifteen miles at a speed limit, I mean, I just, when I drive, I just let it go, you know. Worse than they were in Cleveland.
Eighty-five's kind of the standard speed out there. I'll be right around eighty-five mile an hour in the seventies. There's that, so that's not just one sixty-one, it's on seventy as well, unless, you know, unless you give it to one of the seven traffic areas where it's really bad. You get around the right time of day, the seventies are pretty slow.
Yeah.
A bunch more heavy traffic, but, so, yeah, I mean, watching those statistics next year or this coming year is gonna be important, and you may want to ask him about taking the traffic count and see if we compare it to the last time he did the count, we'll see what will happen. And, uh, hopefully, maybe that could relate to even more assistance with this. I'll talk to Kevin Miller and see if there's something else he wants to do in the coming months, maybe do another blitz. Over a holiday weekend or something, keep putting more out.
Okay.
Trying to get people to slow down, our, our, our biggest problems here are speed and people not maintaining their shirt for a distance, which is a late speed. They just don't give enough, you know, of the correct, you know, shirt for their distance when people stop.
Yeah. If you give the car and a half, there's always somebody holding it in his wheel.
And that happens, yeah.
Is the stretch rope where the median is, is it continuing to improve with safety? Stable and safe?
I don't know if she gave me anything on that.
I know you provide a report about at least once a year on that, so it's interesting to see how that.
I don't, I don't think I've really looked at that this year on the median, but, okay, no, I'll bring that next month, we'll run median stats. And do a comparative, just to help. I'll let you know if it, if, looking at the overall thing, I would say those accidents probably went back up, but if you look at the cause of factor, all those there are speed and shirt for their distance. And it's just tough to get people to maintain that in, not necessarily high speed, because you can't really get going high speed down there, because most time of the day, it's bumper to bumper, but it's speed too much for the conditions. You can't continue to do thirty-five in heavy traffic.
Yeah.
You gotta slow down and you gotta leave the, the appropriate gap between you and the vehicle in front of you. And a lot of those that we get are hit and then they go up to, they're so close, we just start a chain reaction.
Yeah.
And we've probably had several of those this year, just a chain reaction, one knocks into another and into another, you know, three, four, five cars, so.
How many, how many did we have?
Two. We have two and we had a couple of severe injuries.
The, um, person down at Licking View on the bridge, was that in two thousand and fifteen, Columbus?
That was last year. You're talking about the, the public transit?
Yes.
Vehicle?
That was fourteen, okay. So the two fatalities we had, there were medical issues in both.
The one was a medical issue, sure, we don't know about this in the last one. I don't think we've gotten a report back from the coroner's office.
The one in, where, Maricopa?
No. We want a matter four, we don't, we can't really say, I don't think they came up with anything from Maricopa. And the, uh.
The one in front of BP, Duke and Duchess?
Yeah.
We think.
Cardiac. He had a history of seizures.
Yeah, the history of seizures, but there was nothing in the medical report to indicate that he was having a medical emergency at the time, it just, the way he operated just goes beyond reason that something can happen. Because, you know, in both, it'd be unclear, across two lanes of traffic, he committed a parking lot over there. Narrowly avoiding that head-on collision, and then this gentleman here, we don't know what the medical is gonna be on that yet, it hasn't been determined. He was flight, flight to Columbus, so that's going to be completed in Franklin County. They're not, they don't get things done as quickly as our local police.
Well, the wife of the woman from the BP station didn't confirm that he had a seizure.
He had a seizure condition.
That had been under control, medicated but under control for several years.
Wow. It's just hard to say and, and hate the conjecture, but the witnesses seem to believe he was under control of the vehicle and lost control at some point, because they said he was in and out of traffic.
The BP one?
Yeah. So, you know, there's ten thousand scenarios, it's possible, but those were both on the same lane. He did have at the time a high rate of speed conditions and above, well above, witnesses were visually putting him at sixty, sixty-five miles per hour at the time he lost control. Well, the way he slid across seventy-nine, he had to be going at a high rate of speed.
Like, like he was in a, yeah.
And then.
Power slide sideways.
Car in two pieces, yeah.
I'll show them the video sometime for, so, yeah, but.
I haven't seen it yet.
Security. You haven't seen that either?
I haven't seen the video yet.
It's very interesting, just, it's hard to believe, a lot of lucky people that day, just missed by debris and that vehicle.
There was video of it.
Yeah, you.
Security camera. BP station.
BP, you could see him sliding.
It's got everything that you can see, I mean, if he's in a side slide, you know.
So, on to overtime usage, we finished the, the month, was a pretty good low month, but we were over slightly the nine thousand three hundred and eighty-six dollars, we over our budget now for overtime. Um, on to the alarms.
Quite a bit less though than the year before.
Oh, yes, oh, yeah.
That's good.
Sixteen, seventeen thousand dollars.
Yeah.
So all in all, a fairly good year, but we didn't ring in like we booked for in dinner budget. Alarms on the month of twenty-seven, we had two residential seventeen commercial and eight fire, as we talked about the fire alarms last month, it is not covered by the city ordinance, seven seventy-one. Only security alarms are covered by the ordinance, so, basically, there, there's no way holding their feet to the fire if they're having a fire alarm issue. You know, I don't know if there's anything in the fire code that, that's there that you can use to cite people for excessive fire alarms if, uh, they're not fixing their system, but it's not covered by that city ordinance that we use on the security alarms, so.
Wait, you think, Chief, is there any provision for that?
And I'm sorry, I was doing some stuff, is there anything in the fire code?
Fire code, that you can cite people for having nuisance fire alarm if they're giving, getting too many fire alarms from.
I'm sure there's, there's something that we can get, I mean, that's, that's part of the reason they wrote the city ordinance, to, to kinda.
Yeah.
Do something about it, because there wasn't a whole heck of a lot to be done, and it ran into so many nuisance alarms.
Well, in the seven seventy-one alarm section that we use to bill people for their excessive alarms, make them get alarm permits, fire alarms are not in that. So, like I said, I don't know if it's covered under separate ordinance or not, these are all under general offenses that we use.
Yeah, it should have been. These were fire alarms, and then, so when the, the discussions took place and, and all that, I mean, Chief Shepard had made that presentation, whatever, but I was under the impression, and I've always told them whether it was a billable, in past tense, but, uh, and I know if I remember correctly, that was after so many, they could, you know, you had to apply annually for commercial or private business at, at a fee or whatever, and so many false alarms and they could suspend your license. But pretty much after that, it needs to be revisited.
Maybe we need to amend that ordinance and fix it so that fire are covered.
Okay, it specifically.
I think so. I think that needs to. We need to look into that one.
The, the biggest thing right now is, we talked last safety committee meeting, um, unless I specifically call in, and I haven't done that in a while, and county fires are keeping track of it. So, that may be something that needs to be, most of the time, it is legit, food on the stove or whatever, but we do, and you can, um, we've had numerous, what, lows in twenty-four Dorsey Mill.
Yeah, we ran on twenty-four Dorsey Mill, um, about twenty-six times in a month in November.
Wow. Twenty-six times?
Yes, we got active alarms, we didn't always go, but we got alarms for that, we got Eden one day.
Do they come into your station house, or are they getting received at the nine-one-one center? Well, we probably need to look, that's an accident.
I'll amend that for you, that was covered under that ordinance.
As it's written now, I don't, if you would try to use it on fire, I don't think you would uphold water, because it does specifically call them security alarms. Doesn't mention fire.
We amended that ordinance to include the fire.
I put it into. It should be, to learn to change it from security and, just security and fire.
And normally, um, our, if you're dispatching something, we're making a call record at our place. So rather than worry about having county fire tracking for you, we can do it. So when you're done, you can call in and tell us that was a billable or not.
Before, just don't even dispatch us on it.
Is it malfunctioning?
Yeah, they were. It was, they were having troubles with their smoke detectors, there was two of them that, the system is just outdated and they just kept.
Right behind.
Right behind ten eighty there that.
Sits next to the substation here.
Oh, yeah.
So they were, yeah, I mean, just constantly, they just got support, just didn't go.
I'm sorry, yes.
Assisted living apartments.
Yeah, I know, yeah.
And that went off for several days.
Send a directed letter to them, it's like.
That Bill Mitchell sign?
Owned by the Mitchell sign people.
Yeah.
I mean, we talked to the lady, the supervisor there, we talked to maintenance.
It sits behind, yeah.
They had the alarm company in there, they changed out that single head, um, that didn't do anything, they ended up, we just had more alarms, and then they'd say, "It's fixed," we'd start going back again, and then, next thing you know, we're getting two or three alarms again.
Twenty-four is notorious for every time they test the alarm system, we get dispatched on fire call or whatever, when they're testing their alarm system, they're supposed to notify the alarm company.
Chief, that might be something for us to discuss with David and maybe get some ordinance, uh, language drawn up to modify the existing one to include that.
Yeah, I think so, especially if they're having issues with, um, vendors and all that, and, you know, be happy to help them track it and, you know, take care of billing and all that stuff.
You could do something to their test.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah, you do.
Get them in the, get them in the checkbook or something.
Right. Certainly can do that.
No, it, it est, as I recall, still, it wasn't a whole heck of a lot, it was a slap on the hand, and then, if they had enough of them, you just didn't renew their permit.
Yes, we can not renew, we can re.
That's an option available to us.
But, yeah.
What's that?
Then we send them fees for running without a permit. They can be fined for operating without a permit.
Is that addressed in the ordinance at all?
Alarm permit, you have to have a permit, have a security line in the city heat, if you operate one without a permit, we'll send you some letters telling you, "You don't have a permit, if you don't get one, then we send them bills."
Well, the officer took an operator, I mean, they.
Yeah, what's the fee for that?
They had to have an alarm.
I don't know, but it's more than.
Sounds like a revenue string. No, I'm just kidding. I got a, I got a question. If their alarm didn't automatically go to nine-one-one, if it just like a regular smoke detector and it went off and someone picked the phone up and called nine-one-one, okay, because they got a forty smoke, and you still run there, and then hang up, and then, an hour later, it goes off, they pick up, call nine-one-one because their smoke detector's going off. And they, we wouldn't get a fee or wouldn't have a, a fee to pay or a penalty, because they're calling nine-one-one, right? I mean, there's no, no penalty for calling nine-one-one if your smoke detector goes off.
But they're not calling.
No, I'm saying they're not calling because it automatically goes, what I'm saying is, the hypothetical is, is if they do away with their, their system, because it's outdated, or they just shut it off completely or whatever, and put up, they'd probably be better to put up just regular smoke detectors that.
And then call nine-one-one.
And they call nine-one-one, it is, is an emergency, as opposed to.
They have, they have an alarm system that's monitored by a company, and that's what.
What Tim's saying is, is they would disconnect that alarm system and just simply.
My code, I don't think.
You can't, you probably can't.
They can't, I won't allow theirs, but.
They can.
And fasten the monitored system, whatever, because of the special.
Because it's the way they are.
They can, they can.
But I got a, I got an actual hypothetical, that if we don't send them a letter saying we're going to fine them and then find them, I know the powers that be aren't gonna worry about it. They're not gonna get somebody in and pay money to have a check until all of a sudden they get threatened to have money come out of their pocket.
That's right.
I mean, you gotta be serious about it.
Yeah, you do, and it's gotta be stiff enough penalty, as I recall, they, they won't drill.
It's not. They're not hefty, but.
It's a lot cheaper to pay a, a fee than to have the alarm people come in for, you know, a hundred and fifty. It's a lot cheaper to pay a, a fee than to have the alarm people come in for, you know, a hundred fifty dollars an hour to, to check over a, a system and all that. And sometimes they can repair it and, and it.
Up to a point, then all of a sudden you start, then central office sees this thing. Because we had problems with the motion detector out in the warehouse. And they had it set pretty sensitive, damn birds would come in. Three o'clock in the morning, old Dick's getting called out of bed, and this didn't, doesn't go down too good. And I gotta go out there and, and.
You know where the bird be?
I was ready to get a shotgun and take care of the bird.
I know elder bear.
But they adjusted it so it wasn't as sensitive, so that the dangling birds let me sleep through the night.
Our insurance carrier and elder bearman, they said, if that alarm's not off, we want somebody alive in that building all night long.
If it's not off.
It's not off. Building over ten million dollars and stuff, you know.
But, you know, those are things we talked about, we're talking about the penalties and fines and not being steep, these are the things that you can address when we amend that ordinance, you know, maybe after you get eight false alarms, then that, or then that fee goes from fifteen dollars per alarm to a hundred fifty alarm or something, then that'll get their attention, I mean. You know, obviously, when you're getting eight, your name, and it keeps going and going, then they don't really care.
See, I thought that one time it was a graduated thing because.
That might be the way to go.
It is, but we might need to take a look and see that, I don't know, the amount has never been changed since the ordinance.
And we gotta make sure that some way.
We may need to look at that, but sends a letter and then finds those.
Check with some, check with some neighboring communities and see if they have anything that they would rest, similar to this.
Oh, they all have, Newark has an alarm ordinance and, you know, so, yeah, I could look up theirs and see what they're charging and how they do it. We can, we can did a comparison before when we came up with, trust me, I remember when it came through, we didn't reinvent the wheel, we comped somebody else's path and, and went the same way they went, it seemed more reasonable that way. Us, you know, take a look at that, I will say, I don't think we've ever revoked anybody's permit. I can say, in, in Mr. Morrow's case, I've had people call me in his position, say, why is that alarm going off? We really don't know, we've been there a bunch, and sometimes like you said, when, if, nobody paid any attention until it went to corporate and that corporate had to cut the check. Pay the city heat, like, why is, why are we paying you this money? And then I would give a call and say, well, your alarms went off this many tons in the night. So, I, I was like, wow, I guess, uh, you probably oughta get somebody out there to take care of that problem, then I'm unaware of it, I'm like, well, sorry. Can you forgive us this time? Like, well, no, we've already sent multiple letters asking you to take care of it, uh.
Forget where the warning letter began with.
Yeah, I guess the warning letter didn't get to the guy who wrote the check.
Yeah, yeah.
It does.
Um. The chief's exam will be given.
So, so Chief, I just say maybe for next month's meeting, if we can perhaps sketch out some recommendations as to changes to that ordinance. And then we can, uh. Discuss those and take action, you know, on, on amending the ordinance after that at some point.
Chief's exam's to be given this Saturday, there's eleven candidates that completed applications that, uh, will be allowed in to take the test. Civil Service Commission will be administering that, and then it'll take about, I think she believes about a week to get the results back. Once we have the results, uh, the top three scores, then we'll do the background investigations and be prepared for a chief's assessment. Then it will be March fifth. The top three going to the, uh, assessment that the high state, the, her, high association of chiefs of police will be, uh, administering that. We'll be meeting with them on the fifteenth to discuss the, after the contents of that, uh.
March fifteenth?
March fifteenth.
March?
March fifteenth is the assessment.
Yeah.
January fifteenth, I'll be meeting with the O A C P to, to discuss the exercises and this and that, how we're gonna conduct the assessment. They'd like to get a lot of input on as to what the city's like, talk to some government people and, you know. Then they sit down, there'll be three of them, they'll sit down and develop the exercises that they learned from that and all the information.
Internal and external?
And external and external candidates are.
Has he announced his retirement date? Middle, like, middle of April.
Oh.
Right, Chief, middle of April, is that, is that what you're looking at as far as your retirement, middle and April?
I'll know January nineteenth a date, but I would say the, the last part of March or the last part of April. That's what I've been told, they like you to go the last part of the month.
Oh, is that right?
I'm sorry.
Okay.
They want you to go out, last day on the books, last part of the month, cause if you go out at the beginning of the month, you end up waiting longer for your pension check to get to you.
Ah, I see.
So, we'll get with them and get some recommendations, but I'll continue to be flexible, depends on how everything goes out here and, you know, I need to assist my replacement in getting their feet wet first few days or so, or whatever, I'll, I'll remain flexible.
How many internal candidates do we have?
Five. And that's all I have.
Everybody have any questions for the chief?
One, about the, uh, the alarms, what, what you're talking, how would that apply to like a, a, a residence? That had your own alarm system that wasn't tied into a monitoring system?
If it's not tied into a monitoring system and we're not being notified from the alarm company that's doing the monitoring, uh, I guess, then it doesn't matter.
Yeah.
Not getting called back.
Cause we're not getting called out.
Yeah, cause we're not getting called out by it.
But there are.
Say, say a neighbor called because they were hearing a siren going off, what?
I don't think that applies, I'd have to, I'd have to check and see if that fits in. The way I recall the ordinance was true, is it has to be a system that's being monitored. Twenty four seven.
Thank you.
Anybody else? We will adjourn at six oh six. Thanks, Chief. Chief, we will move on to fire, chief, pardon, before we do.
Thirty. Oh, let's see here.
For a while, thanks.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry, what was that?
You don't?
A lot of years coming for you right here. Okay. December statistics. Fire calls, of course, thirty, uh, an increase of thirty five over the previous year. EMS calls were up ninety eight total over the previous year. EMS transports, um, were up eighty two over the previous year. For a total, based on the numbers that I get from county fire and, and Warren and I were looking at these earlier today. Our stats show twenty four hundred and ninety eight responses that the city made. The county CAD system is showing twenty five hundred and six. And you wanna explain that when we're in or?
Um, some of those are, um, the difference in the numbers will be, a lot of times we get dispatched to Newark or another mutual aid company and they mark in service, you know, Newark is notorious for calling us for a mutual aid EMS run while they have a medic at the hospital. And so, five seconds, ten seconds after we get dispatched, they, Newark Medical come on and say, we can take that from the hospital. So, the CAD system gives them a run number, we don't count it as a run for us, even though the CAD system will count it as a run.
I see.
We don't do a report on it, we don't count it as a run for us, um, even though we are technically dispatched on it, we don't, we don't even get out the door, so it's not a run for us.
So, they consider a, CAD system is considering a run to be, when the call is made. Not, whether or not you're actually the one responding.
Yeah. As soon as they receive a call and they say Newark's tied up, heat can take it, it gets assigned a number for us. Then, you know, Newark Medic marks in service, say, hey, we can handle that from the hospital, um, and then they say, okay, Heath, you can cancel and Newark Medic, he's gonna handle.
But they don't have any way of scrubbing those kind of things from their data?
No, not that I'm aware of, but they, there's a lot of issues with that system in general, so.
Yeah, that's probably the least of it.
Their least of their worst, yeah. They have a lot bigger issues.
Which goes back to, um, and, the end of the year report always is, the, the monthly reports that I give you are based on the stats that I receive from county fire, I tabulate them and handjack them most of the time. And then you get to the end of the year and they run something and the numbers don't always jive. If you do it in our computer at the station, those numbers don't jive either, so. The only one I, as I was telling Warren earlier today, the only one that I can validate, um, and I do several times a year are our EMS transports. And Med Bill's good at, you know, tabulating and I always, um, our eleven hundred and forty seven is exactly what their records show. Subject, Ryan.
Twenty four ninety eight, I'm just trying to figure out what, is that his total, what?
That's your year-to-date fire runs plus your year-to-date EMS runs.
Okay, not transports.
Correct.
Now, the transports are part of that.
Cause the squad will run, but not always do they transport.
So, you know, a little over fifty percent of the time, um, they're transported to the hospital, but. So, twenty four ninety eight is a terrible, the, the EMS runs and fire runs are. Yeah, that's correct. And those, those are, um, mutual aids that we, that includes the mutual aids that we have given to somebody. That doesn't include the second row of stats, the mutual aids that we received. And that being said, uh, as you can see in, uh, we question the stats, the, the most recent set of stats I got from county fire, Warren and I were going down through them and they're not accurate in any way, shape or form, cause there were numerous fire runs that it shows on the printout that we had no mutual aid coming into the city at all. And that's, that's not the case. We normally have either Hebron or Newark or both, or depending on the, the location of the city. And for some reason, their, their CAD system was not spitting that information out, so I'm questioning.
Just as a point of information. Yes, it's, it's. Well, I took my wife to the hospital and how is that building part of it? I mean, we're covered with Medicare and our secondary insurance, is there, I mean, do we get a bill or how's that done? I mean, I just, you know, it's something that, you know.
I'm not really sure exactly, and you can jump in here too, Med Bill handles the billing and they will bill your primary or secondary, whatever, and go from there and then you may get a, depending on if it's because we do the balanced billing or whatever. Some places only charge or send a bill three times, it's called soft billing, but.
Usually. If you're, Doug White works is every year, um. The auditor and I sit down with Med Bill. We take a look at, um, the rates that we charge for EMS billing. If you're Medicare or I think Medicaid too, those are kind of predetermined, uh, uh, amounts. They are, they are less than what we charge for EMS billing for, but that's the federal government.
Yeah.
You know, mandating that they can't be any more than this or that. If you're Medicare or Medicaid, I highly doubt that you see anything in the way of a bill, it probably just gets handled by Medicare.
Okay. Uh, but it got secondary insurance, which they did we had too, so.
If you're.
Just wondering.
If you're on, if, if, if you're not, if you're not on Medicare. Oftentimes, what'll happen is by the time the EMS bill is sent. The, the person has probably already hit their deductible. For that, you know, hospital stay or whatever it was coming from that EMS run. So, those people, the, the insurance company will offer, oftentimes cover one hundred percent of those, of those bills. In the cases where, and, and there's a, and there's, there's one insurance company who rather than send the check to, send the payment to Med Bill. They send it to the person. Now, Med Bill tries their best to explain to that person that when you get this check, don't go buy a new TV. But sometimes they go buy a new TV. So, in those cases, Med Bill follows up, tells them that money was supposed to come to us, you know, you need to pay us this amount. If it gets so far, sometimes David has to get involved in, in making sure that those things get cleaned up. In Med, in, in EMS billing cases where the person is just poor. What Med Bill will suggest that they do is the hospital has a process where they can get a reduced charge if they provide information that shows that they are, aren't financially able to pay. We can then use that same paperwork and they will, Med Bill will send that information to me. It has happened less frequently over the past, say, year or two than what it did the first few years when I was mayor. But they will send that information to me and they will ask me to evaluate it and see if there's any accommodations that we could do. Sometimes we reduce the total amount of the bill. I've even before just set them up, oh, can you pay ten bucks a month? Yeah, I do that, okay, then do that. And Med Bill handles that, that process, so, um, that's kind of how the EMS billing and the process goes. In your case, being Medicare, you probably won't see anything.
So, do we have a good co- collection percentage of the total bill?
Absolutely, cause like Chief says, we don't soft bill, we hard bill. Uh, if we, if we transport you to the hospital, we'll send you a bill, we'll send you a reminder, we'll send you a reminder. We don't just discard it then after that point, like I said, sometimes David even has to get involved in situations like that, so.
I'll sue them in small claims court, get a judgment and then try to collect it.
Yeah.
Numerous cases of that? Yeah, there are a couple dozen maybe.
Comes that they have no insurance.
I suppose that's illegal now, isn't it? Does it not have that insurance?
It is, but there are a few that there are a few who don't.
So's auto insurance, so's auto insurance, but.
I mean, doesn't the city still have a, the, the patient can fill out a, a financial, um.
Yeah, that, yeah, that was what I was talking about.
And the insurance, and the city still has an insurance board which consists of you and a counselor or whatever and.
Well, you, can you pay me ten bucks? The guy said, yeah, I can do that.
Yeah, I, I, I mean, in the case of. That would, I mean, I, I, I'm trying to think if I've ever had come across my desk a case where a person just flat out did not have any insurance, and one does not come to mind.
We've had some that have refused to pay because, you know, we should have been dispatched, you know, Heath Fire or my, we live in Hebron and. And you guys should have never been, well, worry about your life.
Yeah.
We're paying for it all anyways.
It's like, like, in, in Newark, they do the soft billing. I, I, I believe it's still their policy, at le- le- at least it was their policy, I've not heard that it's changed. They do that soft billing where they'll send you a bill and then they'll ask you to pay it again and then they'll ask you to pay it again and, and they just won't ask you anymore and that'll be that. We don't do that, so sometimes, and, and Chief, I think you've mentioned this to me before, where you have frequent flyers. Who are used to that process happening in Newark. And that's not the way we handle it, so if we get called on a mutual aid and we run them, we get paid.
Buckle Crooker was on vacation down in the north of South Carolina and his boy broke his leg. Buckler Crooker was on vacation down in the north of South Carolina and his boy broke his leg. And before he'd leave the state, he had to make sure that he would cover the bill.
Is that right?
Yeah.
Wow.
I remember him telling me about it when we just got into this. But damn, somebody turned the stage or no sticker for it.
Always hit your standing chair, man. Break a leg. Bring him to the hospital.
Moving right along. Our medical aides, medical aides given sixteen fire and twenty-five EMS. For some reason, based on the stats that we had, uh, current stats, we made what about forty-one? Forty-one gave out mutual aid and we received twenty-four. So, those numbers are not.
Yeah, guys, I, I want to talk to you, I want to talk to you a little bit about this and, and I mentioned this when Tim and Doug were in here, uh, you know, like before the meeting. I want to talk a little bit about this. If you guys want to see this information, then we've got to change the safety committee meetings date off the first Monday of the month. Because, like in the case of today, Chief Huggins was not able to prepare an agenda ahead of time. I, I tell the department heads, I want to have your agenda by noon on Friday. Or in the case of Chief Mason, and he got me his on Thursday, cause, you know, Friday was a holiday. Cause I like to take a look at it, make sure I understand what's on the agenda. And then we put those agendas up on the city's website. We want to give the public the opportunity to be able to see what's going on in the committee meetings. And if there's some interest, then they can come. Well, you know, in, in the case of Chief Huggins, there's no way that he could have put this agenda together. Because, you know, today's January fourth, but this is the first business day of the month. The data that Chief Huggins uses to get this, he didn't have it until earlier today, so.
County at three o'clock and, and Med Bill was, what, about five, four-thirty, five o'clock.
Yeah. So, you know, so he's, he's scrambling trying to provide you guys with the information that you're wanting to see. You know, next month, the first Monday is February first, we're going to run into that situation again. Now, March is, March seventh, we would be okay. April's April fourth, we may or may not have that information in time to get that agenda ready for Friday.
The week before, it's a three-week report.
Or it's a one-month lag.
I just, I, I, two solutions, either have a one-month lag on it or you can flip-flop streets and parks to this, this meeting and move this one back and then split it.
Well, that would be my recommendation, was to make the safety, to, to make the safety committee a third.
The third Monday next month.
If, if you want to see this data, you know, on the previous month. If, if you don't care about that data, then, then the timing of it doesn't matter. But my understanding is that you guys do. So, I'm just telling you that it's impossible for these guys to get the agendas together, you know, on, 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 on many months.
Can I suggest that we talked about before we go moving his committees? Because I seem like I remember that was suggested, he said, no, don't move me to the first one. So, there, I don't know what his reason is, if it's legitimate, but I just think we should. I don't want to or if there's a reason. Yeah, right, I mean, there's, when he said that, I said, no, I'm not, I don't, I didn't mean it like that. And then it was like, I don't know if it's a reason about statistics or whatever, but I. That makes difference to me, but I just feel at least as a courtesy, we should.
And he said, no.
We should involve him.
Handle it, work it out.
Yeah, we should just.
I don't, I, I, I don't, I don't remember. I don't remember what it was.
I thought he didn't want to go on a non-meeting night. I thought he didn't want to go to.
That's right. He wanted to go when there was an open council.
Okay, maybe that's why.
If he, if he switched to first and third.
He might be okay.
He might be okay. I, he didn't want to go to the second or the fourth.
We don't want him either, I mean, when, when.
We could do that, we could move it to the.
There's way too much of a gap, way too much of a gap with the other night, the other meeting.
And then that way.
Oh, with zoning, move the safety.
Yeah, zoning meetings are very short.
Isn't this something that we probably could discuss between, or, or public safety and after, between caucus and a meeting day? Sorry, I just.
I'm making a suggestion.
Right, right, right.
I'm not telling you guys to make a decision, I'm just making a suggestion.
We don't have a finance meeting to speak on unless, we've got plenty of time.
Yeah, we can't talk about that, I may understand what you're saying, but it makes sense.
It just, it's just hard, it's too, it's not right. Yeah.
Very good, thank you.
Uh, the legislation, monthly expenses, and you can see the numbers compared to, overtime was down seventeen thousand ninety-nine dollars compared to the previous year. And it should have been down much more, but we had Spelman off, Brown off, um, Stone off, and then who else? Ryan Cox.
Cox with the eternity.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, there at the, at the end, it, it really.
Is it eternity leave if it's a male taking time off?
It's not eternity leave, right?
Family leave.
Family leave there.
Under equipment.
You got quite a story if it was in terms.
Medic one, the one that we keep putting stuff into, had a fuel pump and regulator, that was about twelve, a little over twelve hundred dollars that just went in it. Uh, we had to replace one of our air monitors that we checked monoxides and such with, that was an eight hundred, a little over eight hundred dollar purchase. Uh, but we were phasing out some of our other stuff and it's getting to the point, it's much cheaper to buy, uh, the costs are down now. The cost of these monitors, are they air sensors in them? They vary anywhere from one to three years of age. MSA's got a deal where they guarantee them for three years, so you're going to replace a couple of them. The monitors eight hundred versus, you know, we used to pay twenty-three hundred dollars for air monitors. So, pretty much you use them, uh, once or twice, replace a couple of sensors, then you throw them away and, and buy new. I mean, that, that's the new way versus trying to keep.
New ones are cheap enough to do that?
Yes, sir.
And.
Hot water tank and the plumbing, our tankless hot water seems to be working out really well. I'm sorry, what was that, Dick? Did you say something?
Yeah, we're calling up landfills.
But the, the hot water tank system seems to be working out real well. We ran into.
That's the tankless one?
That is, a tankless at station, replaced the two big, uh, natural gas guzzlers or whatever. And all the problem we ran into was, for some reason, when they built the station, they used thin wall copper. And a lot of it, I don't know why they did, but that's what the plumbing people put in or whatever, it would be a cost savings versus thick wall.
The wall was big.
Yeah.
Yeah.
M versus L or, you know, K copper, uh, in some cases, but it's deteriorated. It's all insulated, but we, we had some leaks and things, but thought it was the boots in that area. But when they got into it, um, you could stick a knife through the sidewall of the pipe or whatever. Now, this was in the room with the computer, all the computer stuff, the telephone stuff and that whole half of the station's, all its electrical stuff. So, if some of that plumbing had let loose, we could have had a real mess, thousands, thousands. So, anyway, been replacing that. So, that's a work in progress, but it just price don't business sometimes, unfortunately. And that must be on anybody's control. We purchased a second Lucas device and it is on medic two, so that's a good thing. Have they used that yet, Warren, you're going?
The second one?
Yeah.
No, not the second one yet.
That's good.
We, uh, here in two thousand seventeen, with the, the equipment levy, um, for the fire department, we got to look to bring in at least one medic, if not both of them, try to find a way. These, I, I'm just sick and tired of seeing purchase orders crossing my desk for repair bills on these medics. And it's the two newer, of the three medics that we have, the oldest one is the one we don't have problems with. The two newer ones are killing us with repair costs. It just doesn't make any sense. We, I, I think that needs to be a focus for us here in, in, in seventeen. We gotta at least one, if not both, we gotta try to find a way, even if we, if it takes us a couple of years or whatever to pay them off. And I don't, you know, these repair bills are just crazy.
And those were a bad couple of years when we bought into the internationals, I mean, it, but, uh, we have had excessive problems and. Your fire equipment levy should have more than enough money to buy at least two EMS units and all other engine and stations too and that all. If you spend it wisely, so.
You're saying borrow from one account and you pay it from a future levy?
Buggy's buggy.
Tax receipt?
No, what I'm saying is, is that just the money that we get each year, we might be able to do it. We might not be able to pay cash a hundred percent, buy one outright. Or we might be able to do that with one, we might not be able to do that with two. But the money that we're saving from not having to have these things in the shop every time we turn around might be worth whatever interest we pay if we finance it out for a couple of years.
We never get an agenda without one of these.
I know.
Prequel.
Believe me, I know. Like I said, I, I, I get tired of the purchase orders.
I saw medic two under number four and I'm like, wow, it didn't break down or anything, all we did was put something on, this is, this is good.
I think the, the whole concept with the internationals, um, was a good idea. I think if the add-on stuff, the emissions and such, I mean, those were purchased, those were tried and true, the same bus engines, the same engine that they put in school buses.
Yeah.
Part of that was parts were readily available and we had it in over here at the bus garage. If we needed a water pump, they would probably have something that we could borrow until we could replace it and things like that. And as I said, tried and true, but, uh, this diesel.
What's the fluid, diesel exhaust fluid?
Yeah.
Diesel exhaust fluid, it's in, it's for the emissions.
All that emission stuff on there, just it's each and live.
One of the biggest issues, but this was a, this was a fuel pump and regulation system filters and all that that went down. But, and once again, parts readily available, but still, this one is tickled and dying just to death and.
You gotta watch international too. I mean, international, I should say, but, but it's true. They, they, they came out with their own engine called Navistar. They used to use Cummins in most of their trucks.
Yeah.
They put the Navistar engine in there. I mean, they're, they're all over the market, they're available and, uh, I mean.
Well, those ones that we looked at last year or whatever before, those were what Ford F, four fifties? Yeah, something like that, so.
And I've had people tell me, stay away from those because of the small brake shoes and blah, blah, blah. But.
Is that right?
They just have to do a little bit more homework and, and all of that, but.
Yeah.
We've had, sure, good luck with our media duties over the years, but, but those last two that we bought especially were, were a problem.
I don't think there'd be any problem, but, I mean, you did a good job of, you know, getting that piece of equipment that we're on, that's in the building right now. You, you guys did a good job of checking on that and seeing what you needed.
The rescue?
The rescue, yeah, yeah.
The, the first February's collections and July's collections, you're going to go towards that, right? Property tax.
Yes.
The first one, yeah.
So, I'm just trying to understand the timeline to when you're thinking you're supposed to be match funded, the first, the first place to get.
You've got what, a hundred thousand thereabouts payment?
In a payment.
In a payment and, and over the course of two thousand.
Two seventy a year, is it?
Yeah, two seventy-four or whatever, so you're going to have kind of Robin Peter to pay Paul, but you're, you're still going to have a, especially if you have a lease or whatever. But, uh, you're going to have the, almost the price of a new medic if you didn't spend anything else out of the equipment, not at all, that first year.
Yeah.
I think what, is it, it, it isn't quite a hundred thousand, is it like ninety-four, ninety-five thousand?
Yeah, I mean, I just rounded it up to a hundred.
Yeah, okay.
But yeah, you'd have about one seventy.
Two seventy-four, yeah.
Yeah. At the end of the year.
So, just, there's no reason why you can't get creative with the financing. That's your job, you're the nut.
I'm going to be talking to the auditor, that's all.
Yeah, okay.
We'll see what's.
Very good. Um, let's see, under training, we completed our medic refresher recently. The majority of the firefighters took that, was forty-eight hours. Old business, uh, we talked about the paint job and, and we had to replace the roof boots, excuse me, um, up there, so that was something that needed to be done before they messed with the roof in the springtime anyway. This is the perforations and, and, um, over the years, as snow and ice build up or whatever, it's kind of like a big glacier and it has come down and it had damaged those boots and things, so they were leaking and, and all. But, uh, they, all the perforations have been replaced and, um, caulked and such.
What was the cost of that?
Uh, that was nineteen, nineteen hundred and forty dollars. The, the paint job, comes springtime, uh, the same people are going to do that and that's going to be about seventeen hundred. You know, we have price quotes of thirty-five to fifty-five hundred dollars from another guy just to come in and paint the roof. So, and these people, they're specialty, you know, buildings and roofs and things, so. So, I think they're going to do us a good job. Uh, I also, um, we received some price quotes, we had some discussion last time about station two repaired. And, um, we'd gotten one from Robinson for about sixty-five hundred dollars and, um, Mr. Morgan, uh, who did the roof repairs, built steel buildings and such, he needed some information, uh, on the color match and all. He's going to send us a quote. I'm surprised I didn't have it on my computer today, but I didn't. So, we'll get that fixed or if I don't, he can. And that course addresses.
Still saying we can't gain money out of that guy plowed into that building?
You can try.
Getting judgments, he, he had the money, he doesn't have any money.
Yeah, yeah, but don't that, doesn't that follow you? You get a judgment like that and you go to work for somebody, can't you still latch on to his money? No matter where he goes.
Yeah, if you find out where he's working, you can garnish his wages.
Judgment's on his public record for.
We got to repower it what, five or six years?
Yeah.
Right?
Five, I think.
Five years.
As long as we keep up with the repiling of the judgment, we have an active judgment, we can still rock this guy, you know, he's.
Yeah. Did you want to talk?
Now, he finally gets a job, we can garnish his wages.
Yeah.
Did you talk about the night Santa almost died on Central Parkway?
Yeah, I know who the driver was. First time you've dumped behind one of those?
Oh, that was Roger Wymer driving. That wasn't me, no, I was, I was taking care of your step ladder. We, we stopped first, escorted Santa to the Shea House, whatever, we stopped on James Parkway. Just the, the crew that was going to take Dick to Shea House, ten minutes before they were supposed to leave, they went to Heath Thirson Home on a cardiac arrest, so everybody was tied up. So, they're scrambling, fortunately, I was in town.
They flipped me the keys and said, drive.
So, anyway, we got him over there, we helped him up on the running board and Roger Wymer was driving the truck and, and, um, and he just floored it and the truck went like that. Unfortunately, I put Rob Gilens on the back there too and between the two of you, you held on to the back end or whatever. Of course, I'm not giving Roger hell and.
What are you doing?
Where is the camera at these two?
Would that have been awful if we had planted Santa?
Yes, it would have been.
He'd have been the first to the scene.
Anyway, it all worked out.
Basically, if you see his name businesses along, they would have security cameras and made a pod glimpse of that.
I might have to look into that.
I would tell Roger, just keep on going.
See, uh, it wouldn't look very good since Heath PD saved Christmas from the Grinch.
That's right, that's right.
Heath Fire Department killed Santa.
Oh, under new business, um, Jay Lorai. Jay Lorai retiring from the fire department, he's been a forth city employee. He's still with the Heath PD and will be for at least another year, I believe, one out, I think in sixteen.
We're not going to push him out the door like we did.
No, I know. But, uh, he brought his gear in today, but retiring after forty-five years. And I, I, this guy has been an auxiliary police officer, uh, since seven, nineteen seventy-three, forty-five years as a. Forty-five years as a volunteer with Heath Department. Uh, he sat on the dependency board and all that and it would be really nice for you guys to get some sort of.
Sort of recognition.
Recognition. I'm sorry. Yes, he had full-time employment, but he volunteered.
He used to be a police officer.
No, he was, I know.
Sewer plant.
Waste water. Thirty years there. Waste water.
Waste water, yeah. And he's the same way. Isn't that something?
Yeah, you know, he was a good man. He just, anyway, it would be nice, some recognition.
Same with the volunteer program?
Forty-five years he's a volunteer.
He's gotta orchestrate the volunteers and.
He's president.
President.
Yeah, so anyway, he deserves something, something for him. Um, and let's see, FEMA grant, I didn't have that on the agenda, but, uh, what, that's due.
Ronnie's working on that, he was with, uh, Jay, talking to Jay and getting, I forget, some number that they're working on, but it's due the fifteenth, yeah, but.
We got that number, I think.
Right, yeah, March radios. Be interesting to see if he's good enough, just gonna try for it. Uh, that's due January fifteenth too, that's such a monumental day.
These are for Art Sandhills?
That's January fifteenth.
Well, that's Martin Luther King's birthday and mine and the day I leave, the day FEMA's due, so. Got all that impotent stuff there.
They want to take over, that's okay.
What's that?
You're leaving?
Yes, sir. Um, under per, how will you do?
Come to the, come to the party, that's right.
Can you prioritize your arch nemesis in this committee?
Oh, no. Rabel, you've got that ants down. So anyway.
Warren, are we also trying to go for a safer grant?
Um, there's, yeah, we're looking at that, we're, um, I know Ronnie was, Ronnie and Roger Baker are doing the research on that this evening.
And when is that due?
We're not sure, they thought it was originally due on the fifteenth, but it's not going to be due on the fifteenth. They're waiting for some, the FEMA to come back with a new date for that.
Okay. The reason why we're looking at a safer grant is, we have, when we went through, I, I think I maybe I mentioned this before. When we went through the process where Marshall Berry was hired into the department, that may have been the toughest decision that I have had to make between two different people for one position out of any of the jobs that I've filled in the city so far. And, the idea came up of, could we, if we had one more full-timer in the department that was only in charge of inspections? And they worked a forty-hour work week, you know, uh, I guess what would it be, seven to three? Something like that? You know, Monday through Friday. And when there was somebody off on a day, that particular person would cover the eight hours of overtime for somebody being off that day. So I told Warren, I said, you know, every time I've looked at the idea of hiring more, it doesn't offset the amount of overtime, you know, we end up raising our overall payroll expense. So they've been crunching the numbers and, and, I mean, I haven't talked to them about it here for two or three weeks because of the holidays or whatever. But they're crunching the numbers trying to show me where it's at, but then also, we got the safer grant out there. Which, the safer grant has changed over the years. It used to be that it would only pay for, like a hundred percent of a person the first year, and then the percentage went down the second year, and then, and then, and then, and then it was like for two years or, and then went to three years and, well now, I guess the safer grant this round is one hundred percent.
But it's only gonna be two years now, they said.
Okay.
Per Jeff Hossie.
Okay.
It's only gonna be two years.
Okay, one hundred percent of all payroll expense. Insurance, uh, salary, you know, one hundred percent of all payroll expense for, I guess, two years. We were, before it was, they were looking at three, right? So, if we were to get this safer grant, that would allow us to try this experiment at no risk to our payroll expenses going up. And we could actually see what the offset of overtime savings would be. Cause we, we could chart it from, from day one. So, I don't know, chief, those are competitive grants, right, those safer grants? And so the quote-unquote poorer departments have a better chance of getting that money?
It, it all depends on the verbiage and, and the way the, the grant is written. Granville's had safer grants, Newark's got.
Newark, Newark's got a safer grant.
Granville has had paid staff in recent years.
They've had a couple of them, haven't they?
Okay.
So.
What happens after two years?
Well, if we evaluate that the, the cost savings of overtime offset salary, then my recommendation would be that we, we keep, keep it. If it doesn't, then, you know, we might have to take a look at, uh, letting, letting, uh, the newest person in the department go. But what I've been told is, there are any number of people who would, even knowing going in that they might only be there for two years, would jump at the chance of a full-time job in a department. In order to be able to get that time, which would then improve their chances if they apply to some other department if they're let go. So, if we get the safer grant, to me, it seems like a no-lose situation. Cause all the payroll expense is covered for the first two years.
Can we reapply for it in two years again?
Can you, to keep the person?
You can reapply, yes.
To keep the person, yeah.
Don't you have to hire somebody new?
Worked in that numerous times.
I don't know how many times.
Well, what we would do is, we would create the position in the department. The first thing we would have to do, see if anybody in the department would, would want to transfer into that position.
Grants have you received?
There may or may not be a full-time firefighter, paramedic currently in the department that would wanna transfer in. We do have more than one full-timer right now that have a certification in fire inspection. So there's different people who could maybe want that job. If they do, then they would go into that and the person we would hire in would be a full-time firefighter, paramedic, you know, with the one day on, two off. If nobody existed, if, if nobody in the department currently wants to fill that one, then yes, we would, the new person would have to be, have their fire inspector certification and could go into that role, which, this other person does have their fire inspector certification.
The one that we did not bring on.
One that you did not bring on.
That's correct.
Yeah. And if it was that close, then hey.
For several years and just you opted not to go that route at the time, but.
Yeah.
You can lay them off, they don't, the police grants, you used to have to pay back.
Chief, just about, just talking to Mayor, saying that it was really a hard decision for him. Through the years, have you seen it be that close to, before?
It was pretty, yeah, it was, it was pretty tight, we had a couple of very good candidates and fortunately, they were already candidates within volunteers. So that made it.
No, I mean, on back through the years.
On back, um.
As you said, that, that was that close, like the mayor's.
I, I, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. But I think we've done pretty well picking the right candidate.
I'll do too.
And sometimes it wasn't the local boy.
Yeah.
But, uh, anyway, it's all been good.
So that's what we're shooting for with this safer grant, that's the concept behind it.
But I think that pretty well, uh, Marshall Berry, well, Spelman's back, he came back on the thirtieth, after getting his navel replaced and. They moved his belly button up higher.
If you've got a, if you've got, you've got a hernia in your belly, and belly button, they got to put it back in. Ask me.
What do you call it, Timmy?
Timmy.
Timmy, Timmy's gone. That and, uh, Marshall Berry worked his first twenty-four hour shift yesterday, um, as the new hiree in the fire department. And that's, of course, uh, as I leave and, uh, Warren moves up, that will fill the void. Uh, he is a hometown kid out of Patasola, but he's been running with us for several years and qualified, knows the equipment very well and so he'll have a very short period before they'll turn him loose, which is all. Counts for overtime, that being said, this is my last meeting and I've certainly enjoyed working with all of you, most of you. And such, but, uh, I think we did a lot of good things together and, uh, Warren knows I cursed at all of you at one time or another because you didn't think the way I did, but I still think we've done good things and yes, you too, Dick. I did that a long time ago, but anyway, I appreciate everything and, uh, it, as I said, it's been fun. Warren's here to take over and, uh, we're all qualified and I hope he cares as much about the city as I do.
He does.
So.
We, um, it's the fifteenth is when we're gonna have your, uh, reception, right?
Yes, fifteenth over at the fire station.
Yes, well, that, obviously you all get an invite to that and I, I strongly encourage you to try, that you try to make it. Jenna's working on that. Oh, has she, has it already been set?
Eleven thirty to two.
Eleven thirty, okay, I was sure. So anyway, and if you don't wanna come to that one or whatever, I've got two days later to Newark Eagles from two to whatever. Uh, I'm hosting a party, a retirement party with the help of some of the county fire people. Yeah, Jackie and, and all, but, uh, free food and drink and.
Where at?
Newark Eagles.
When?
That's, uh, on Sunday.
Free food and drink.
My language here.
You may not be able to afford that, Mark. You may not be able to afford that party.
Seventeen, eighteen, eighteen.
What time?
Fourteenth Avenue.
Starts at two.
Fourteenth Avenue, right?
On four, yeah. Where you guys steer. Don't you have coun, let's still have dinners for the council people?
At what?
I've never been to one, they do.
I've never been to one. There you go, Mark, you ruined it.
I think the Newark one go and so we got, but I don't know. Years ago, yeah, years ago. First couple of years on council.
They used to have dinners for city officials.
Oh, yeah. All type. I forgot to tell you guys.
No, did, did you ever go, I know the trustee.
The chief, uh, Mason kinda mentioned this a, a little bit ago. I don't know how many of you are on Facebook and if you are, uh, you should like the city's Facebook page. On the city's Facebook page, on Christmas Eve, I had received from the police department photos of, uh, the Grinch being arrested uh, and being put, cuffed and put in the back of an, of a, one of our patrol cars. So, I went and, I, I, I took those photos and I wrote up a little something or whatever and posted it out there. I think that was the most popular Facebook post that's, that's ever been on our city's page. I think it had over ten thousand five hundred views. It had three hundred and some likes. It had, I think, like twenty-seven comments to it, all of them, you know, saying that it was great, thanking the police officers for what they do. It was shared, I think, a hu, a hundred and some times, I, I, I can't remember what the final number ended up, ended up, or maybe it was, maybe it was shared the three hundred and some, I can't, but it was, I think, far and away probably the most viewed post that we've put on the, the city's Facebook page. Chief, I thought that was a really great idea and, and I sent an email out to all of the officers encouraging them to see, to look at the city's Facebook page, cause I wanted them to see all the positive comments that, uh, the people put out there on, on, on that post. They need to understand that they're, um, well-appreciated in the, in the community.
And you know, we was talking about public bill about how rest and all these other things are up. Well, people are still telling me, since he's been chief, of how many cars are on the road, police cars, that they've never seen before. And I think that had a great impact on the numbers going up too. They stop and tell me, you know, you've got, your police department's written that.
They were part.
Well, your officers are pretty rough on the Grinch, cause he's going to the children's church.
That's right. Sometimes they go to the hospital before they go to jail.
So anyway, thank you for everything and, uh, we'll cross paths. And I hope you get better and understand that, uh, Mr. Goodwin's having some issues or.
Yeah, what's his, what, what, what's your update on him, you got any information?
They, I guess got the trach out today and, uh, he's got past that, so.
What did he have?
He had a small bleed and, uh, they had, uh, put him on breathing assistance.
Did, I understand he had pneumonia or whatever and some respiratory issues.
And, uh, I think there was some MRSA too, so. Having a hard time.
Is Becky okay? Having cross paths or?
As okay as anybody can be in her position.
I tell you, yeah. It's been a little more than a year, right, since that first incident took place?
Seventeenth was a year.
Anything else for your juvenile night?
Um, I believe I've covered everything.
Does anybody have any questions for the chief? All right, well, we want a six fifty-seven, we got caucus to do. Finance.
No, I'm, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I was just checking on the, the one at the firehouse is when?
The fifteenth, that's Friday. On the fifteenth, it starts at eleven thirty and I think it goes till two.
A M?
Uh, it's gonna be a, I guess, hot buck.
It's a luncheon, kind of a luncheon.
Luncheon and cake. That oughta be enough to fly.
That oughta get you through till Sunday.
We're starting off the new year with a bang, yeah.
Yeah, the Christmas cheer is out the window now.
Our meeting, the eighteenth is moved to the nineteenth.
The nineteenth, that's correct.
That's correct.
In honor of his birthday.
While the camera's running, I still, I've gotta thank the, our taxpayers who have always been more than supportive of the fire department. And without, without the taxpayers, we can make decisions, but our taxpayers have always honored our fire department. Every levy we've ever had and good PR and such, so without them, it would have never been possible, so appreciate that.
Jay didn't really have a finance agenda for tonight, but I just, I just wanted to mention to you, I mean, I, I've, I've got the capital improvement project lists from the department heads. I'll have that for us, the, the planning document on, uh, the nineteenth. But actually, uh, tonight you guys are voting on the one ordinance for. But actually, uh, tonight, you guys are voting on the one ordinance for the, uh, seventy-some thousand for the engineering on the Linville Road thirteen realignment and resurfacing, and then also, uh, the Green Valley Drive. That's what that ordinance on the second reading is for tonight, so, you guys are voting on that already, but, just a heads up.
Just committed battle.
So, okay, wait, you don't have any, anything to share with us tonight?
Uh, I mean, I can, um, we're looking at-
We got a couple of minutes here.
In the Parks Department, uh, Bob has, and, and I think there's one point seven million in the capital improvement fund. I'm pretty sure, one point seven million. Bob has sealing all the parking lots and bike paths, um, for the park system. He has that estimated at seventy-five thousand, he and I talked about that, we are, uh, I'm gonna talk to the county Parks Department, like I said, apparently, I'm supposed to ask them to do what they campaigned saying that they would do, so, I'm, I'm gonna approach them here in the, in the new year and talk to them about our, our bike paths. The street department, if we want to upgrade that intersection at Thirtieth Street that, that we've talked about before, that has the turn lanes, but it does, it's not signaled and all that, he has that cost estimate at fifty thousand dollars. And then, uh, one thing that, that, that I, I think does need to happen, or else we're gonna start to lose it, the parking lot at the pool, sealing it and restriping it, he has that estimate at, at twenty-six thousand. For Eddie, well, I mentioned the, the seventy-three thousand total for the engineering costs on those two projects, Green Valley Drive, and then the, uh, Linville Road and, and thirteen realignment. He has, uh, imagine this, his, his number one priority is his owning truck. Now, I don't think we'll spend the amount that he has in here, but I do think we need to try finding a new truck, I mean, it's getting, if it hasn't already been there, it's, it's getting embarrassing, having him drive around the city in a vehicle that's in that condition, and, and literally, the doors in the past have been known to fly open when you take a turn, so, um, we probably oughta find him a different set of wheels, uh, for his, for his job.
When's the auction?
We have tried for the past two or three auctions to find a vehicle for him in those, and we have not been successful in doing so. We, we, we have, we have tried.
My, my pickup truck isn't-
Maybe you just toast something to take that with you.
Well, I mean, some of that can, the striping and some of that can come off the doors and things, and-
Are you talking about your command vehicle?
That's correct. Uh, they're gonna probably try to replace, get Warren something newer, but it's got some life left in it, it is rusted too, but the doors aren't falling off of it, and-
Yeah, it, uh, that, that, that might be an option. That might be an option for us.
We decide on it for him.
Yeah, yeah, you'd appreciate that. As far as, um, Eddie's on service side, and, you know, as, as, as much as I like to try to scrimp and save, this also is probably getting to the point of embarrassment. The carpet here on this side of municipal building, this, that, down the hall, I mean, people are starting to trip on the carpet going down that hallway that's raised up in various spots, I know. And, um, you know, I, I remember Chief Mason describing the condition underneath the carpet when they, when it was taken, pulled up over on the police side. He's got that estimated at nineteen thousand to replace the carpet. It's, like I said, it's kind of embarrassing, when I have-
How long would it take to get it up?
I have no idea. And then, on the police side, uh, it was fifty grand total for a new Explorer, um, patrol vehicle, and then also getting Detective Phillips a new undercover car. Uh, his, the Charger that he uses is, um, starting to, to rack up some expense, we need to get rid of that, so, um, so, anyway, and it's a little less than fifty, but around it, it's fifty for those, for those two. So, I mean, that's, that's what's gonna be on the planning document.
Anything else for finance, it's pretty much an open forum with no agenda. Anything else, anybody else? Okay, I'm during seven oh five.
You wanna take a five-minute break? Five-minute break, and then we'll have caucus.
Five minutes, I'm gonna talk to Roger. Please, when you start here, next Thursday.